Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shastberry Select Board. I'm calling this meeting of the Shastberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, November 17th, 2018. Does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
First up, approval of minutes. We are presented here with minutes from our last meeting on September 4th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Motion approved from Tony, seconded by Joe. Any additions or corrections to the minutes for September 4th?
I wasn't here, but did it start at 6:00 or are usual meetings are at 6:30, very first pair, very first signs?
It was at 6:30, wasn't it?
It would've been at 6:30.
Yeah, alright. Good catch. Any others?
It's Thursday, right?
Yes, that was a special meeting.
That was at 6:00.
I don't think so.
I think it was at 6:30. Always do it at 6:30, yeah.
Yeah, I tend to try to keep things as regular as possible because we're all used to Monday at 6:30, so Thursday at 6:00.
I was thinking so.
Let me check.
Yeah, I'm checking.
I didn't put it on my calendar? How did I get here? What is the consensus?
Do you remember? Was it 6:00 or 6:30? Without a special meeting at 6:30?
The afternoon?
Was it at 6:00?
Alright, I have one more way to check.
It was at 6:30. The agenda was for 6:30.
Okay, alright. 6:30 it is. Alright, any other changes? All in favor of approving the minutes for September 4th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. So the minutes for September 4th are approved 4-0-1.
And Ken, you have these two minutes you can pass down. These are two sets of all minutes that we found they have the right combination on the board here tonight. Two of these as well have been distributed and they were distributed again.
Okay, these are from June 18th. Is there a motion to approve?
Probably.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Joe.
Tony was here.
At that meeting, we had Tim Skoggins, Ken Harrington, and Joe Barber. Okay. Any changes to the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. So those minutes for June 18th are approved 3-0-2. And we have minutes for July 16th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Moved by Tony.
He was here.
Seconded by Joe. At that meeting, we had Ken Harrington, Tony Kulikowski, and Joe Barber. So we can act on these. Any changes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining.
Abstaining.
So those minutes are approved by a vote of 3-0-2. And first I have check warrant number seven in the amount of $106,983.24.
Some move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Major items over $1,000, we have $9,600 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $1,100 to G.A. Bove Fuels, $2,400 to Goldstone Architecture, $17,000 to Matt Morris Excavating, $67,000 to Russell Construction Services, that would be the garage, $1,600 to VRS Sales, I don't know what that one is.
That's Fire Trucks, that's the maintenance company for the fire trucks.
Right, I've had that a couple times, I should remember. $2,500 to William E. Daley. Those are the major items. Any more discussion on check warrant number seven?
What was the, what did Matt Morris?
Matt Morris had a contract to do work at Brandeis Cemetery. It was removing a whole bunch of debris that had piled up over the years. It took quite a number of truck loads. That's actually being paid for out of the federal fund for the cemetery.
Was that checked to Russell for the building or just for work up to that point?
That's just for work up, that's just a regular stuff.
We haven't paid for the building.
No, the building is laying on the ground up there. Unboxed a little bit before we pay.
Yeah, no response.
They, yeah, right now, they, well, they're part of the contract, they took care of it. And once Jack has a chance to go through it and see everything, then we'll look forward to that one.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number seven, say aye.
Aye.
So check warrant number seven, in the amount of $106,983.24 is approved 5-0-0. Next I have payroll warrant number five in the amount of $20,040.27.
Some move.
Motion to approve from Tony. Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, are there any announcements? Wanted to mention a couple of things. As we mentioned before, we have increased traffic enforcement on several streets in Shastberry. We've instructed the sheriffs to move around day-to-day, trolling areas where we've had a lot of reports of complaints about speeding. They will be out to write tickets. They will be posting, setting out invisible where you can see them to slow you down. They're going to be hiding the cars and writing tickets. We're getting serious about getting control of the speed limits around here, especially on the roads with 25 mile an hour speed limit. Another announcement, I wanted to mention that I have been heavily involved as a member of the RED Group, the Regional Economic Development Group, on developing a two-county comprehensive economic development strategy. We are in the phase of public comments on that, and there are meetings around the two-county area. Wyndham and Bennington Counties are forming a two-county economic zone. The Bennington meeting is on September 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Mount Anthony Masonic Lodge. I will be at that meeting. We encourage everyone with an interest in the local economy to show up, give us your input, help us guide the strategy for this two-county economic development zone. Are there any public comments? No? Okay. Treasurers report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Thank you.
Take the hot seat.
I'll dash through this real quick. The cash flow. Anything interesting? We got our first dog found in my tenure here. That was kind of exciting.
Public news out of paperwork, huh?
Yeah, right. That grant reimbursed, Matt Morris. Do you want to say anything about that? The, that big?
Sorry, I was reading about something else.
The 18,700, that's the biggest thing in there. I just don't remember what it is.
Sorry.
Should've gone off.
Yeah, sorry.
Tinkham Road.
Oh, Tinkham Road, that's what that was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. If you want to go to the bottom half, let's see. Yeah, nothing all that interesting. You can see the garage bond continues to shrink as we continue to spend money out of it. If you go to the other one, the, oh, if you want to, yeah. You want to show the reserve funds one?
Sure.
I'll dash through that one too. If you look down at the, just a little bit lower, yeah, there's the garage line. You see that credit there of $70,000. That represents our latest transfer from the bond into the reserve account. You just approved, the warrant has a lot of money that is going to be spent out of that and help it to transfer over to the general fund. So that's where you see it when that spending is happening.
Uh-huh.
The other, mostly just looking at water payments. So I got the tax bills out on Friday. A lot of people have already received them Saturday, which was pretty quick turnaround. Very got my first handful of payments and my first handful of panicked people calling me. And it caused me to write an article for the banner. I don't know whether they'll punish it, publish it, but I gave it to Dave to put on the website too. So it's basically just an FAQ of tax bills, the questions that I get all the time this time of year. You know, there's going to be a line out the door in my office and people really want to ask me answers, sometimes they have to take a number. So it might be quicker just to look at the FAQs because probably I address it there. But the panicked people are the ones who get their bill and see that they're being charged non-resident when they think they did their home stay. Sometimes the paperwork just didn't go through and that's your first indication that it didn't, and it can cost you, you know, thousands of dollars. So when you get your bill, don't just toss it aside. Look at it carefully, make sure that everything makes sense. If it doesn't, there's not a lot you can do about it. That's a state issue. So then you're going to want to talk to the Vermont taxpayer advocate. The number is in that article or you can call me for it. They're very, very helpful, but there's still time, but there's not a lot of time. So that's the most urgent thing coming up this time of year. I got a lot of calls about that today.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions about that? Oh, the other thing is that some people call and say, "Why are you sending me this tax bill? Don't you know I have an escrow company?" There's, I sent out over 1,700 bills. I don't know where everybody does their banking. That's a sort of a relationship you have with your bank. So if you get a revised bill, you have to send it to the bank yourself. I don't know where you bank. And every year, there's some people who don't inform their escrow company. The escrow company pays way too much. The homeowner gets the refund, and then they also don't tell the escrow company. Makes them mad. So don't do that. Don't come complaining to me if you do. So those are the two really big things that people need to remember and read that article and absorb it because a lot of people are pretty, pretty definitely. Is that all clear?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any questions, guys?
Questions for Melanie?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael Uniti, welcome.
How's it going?
Tell us all about what you've been doing, what you're going to do on the roads.
Well, what we've been working on is that reclaiming asphalt shingles project. We've been on Myers Road.
Yes.
And right now, we're ditching both sides of the road, removing burn, cleaning ditches, did some brush removal, getting the road back to the way it should drain water before we add that gravel to it. The guys have been chugging along with that, and I've had one of the other guys great. My plan was to put that rasp down Thursday, but it's not going to happen this week, so I contacted the state and I'm going to shoot for probably Thursday next week to finish that. We don't have much ditching left in the section that we're fixing, so we should be done with that this week. All depends on what this rain brings tonight too, how much damage that does. So I am running short-handed, but we'll get through it.
Right.
So, yeah, the plan for that is next Thursday, which I'll have to contact Buzz with the state just to let them know because I guess he said there's a group of people coming down.
To watch.
To watch. They want to see it in place.
How do they put it on, Mike? Pay burn?
No, we're going to spread it with the tandems and grade it, enroll it. We're going to rent a laboratory 20-ton roller, put it down, it's three inches thick, it'll be about 800 feet. We narrowed up the road a little to where it should be. The road was pretty wide.
Yep.
And we put the road back to 22 feet, so you got 11 foot on each side. And so about three inches and the 750 feet will take you through with that. The end of October, we're going to rent a mower with a brush head for two weeks. We're going to do White Creek Road, Buck Hill, and East Road. We're going to focus on those. We're going to try it out, see how it works. I met with Fairfield, their machines that they rent, and he's setting us up with a good-sized tractor and the right mowing head for mowing brush, get some of that brush back. Because a lot of that brush is encroaching on the road. If you haven't noticed, I mean, you look at some of it and you can see like the shape of vehicles as you go under it. So we're going to mow, mow that back, and now that Hosley's gone through and mowed, you can see what some of the brush is still overhanging into the road. So we're going to do that more towards the tail end of October, and that's when it's available. It's all booked up right now.
Okay. I hope that mowing brush means brush and not exploding trees that I've seen mowers try to do before?
Not exploding trees. I know exactly what you're talking about, and that won't happen.
Okay, good.
I mean, this, this head that's on this mower is, chips it up a lot finer, so it doesn't look like a mess like the other head that we have isn't designed to cut brush. It's designed to cut some brush, but not big trees.
Right, good.
We're going to continue grading as we can, being short-handed, and then we talked with Dan Deerestein with Peckham about the paving project. Peckham's moving in Monday, the 24th, and Tuesday, the 25th.
Sorry about East Road here?
Yeah, they're going to reclaim East Road, and then I spoke with the paving contractor, and he'll be in the following week. And the reason that they can't do it the same week is Peckham has got all this state work going on right now, and they can't shut the plant down to do this job. So Dan said, if schedule goes planned, the following week after they reclaim the road, pavement should be down.
Wouldn't they, they take, they take this and put it through the plant? Is that why? You said they couldn't?
No, this, this gets reclaimed and put back down.
Okay, you made the comment that they couldn't shut the plant down.
Dan said they can't switch the mix design.
Okay, it's the mix.
The mix, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I said that kind of weirdly.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, yeah, he was saying because the state mix for the-
All these other things.
Class one section of roads is different than the mix that we have. Because we're, we're doing a base or binder and then a top, so it has a bigger stone than what they're using.
So this reclaiming, pick up the old pavement, put it back down?
Yeah, the machine reclaims the road and puts it back down. I'm pretty sure it's just like the-
It's the same thing we've been knowing. You just grind it up, you put it back down, and grade it in place.
And then we're going to grade as-
Chloride it, and then they pave it, I guess, a week later this month.
A week later, yeah.
Oh, so what goes back down is more like gravel than like?
Yeah, it's more like a base. It's just reclaiming.
Yeah, it takes that four inches of asphalt that's there and mills it all up, but it puts it back down, but it'll look, really, it'll look thick, so we got to go through and fine-grade it out.
Okay.
And then I talked with the paving guy, and he said that they're going to compact and roll it before, before they pave, so we just have to do it. And-
So what kind of surface will we be driving on between reclaiming?
Just like our dirt roads.
Be just like a dirt road?
Just like a dirt road.
Okay.
It's just going to be black, because it's going to look like the pavement.
Hmm, okay.
It'll be smoother than the bump snams.
Yeah. We touched them up on Friday, but-
I noticed that.
They go so fast down through there that all the material we put in is all, is all down the hill.
It's hammering down.
The uphill, that's all stayed pretty good, but heading downhill pulls it right down. That's pretty much all I have right now. We're just going to keep moving forward, maintaining some equipment. Trucks are at worst repair, one at a time, getting sprayed with an undercoating. Tires, we got tires on the grader, tires on the back door. That's about it for now. Planning, scheduling for the next move.
We did get the extension.
Yes.
You were talking about the Shastberry Hollow project. I asked the state for an extension because we are down two crew members out of the board fully aware. One of our members had an off-duty accident, and he's been out for a week. He's out for a second week now, and we don't know if he's going to be back next week or the week after. So we now have two employees out on off-duty accidents, and it's kind of putting a crimp in getting this done.
Oh, no, I didn't know about the second.
Yeah, it was, we didn't think it would be more than a few days last week, but now it's-
Who was it?
This week. Steven. So then it's off, he's going to let us know about next week, and so we are running, yeah.
We are running lean right now.
Yeah. So we asked the state, the Shastberry Hollow project with the grant expires December 30th. We asked them, we're giving an extension to June 30th, so what we'll do is we'll work with two grants and aid projects, get a contractor. Because we did most of the work from Tinkham, which was that 18,000, is what we were reimbursed for, but we can use the grant money to hire a contractor and have our match, be our additional work on there, and we'll work that out. So we'll line up a bid and have contractors bid on it for the spring. Because we even went to contractors to see if anybody could do with this, Paul. Nobody can do it, everybody's too busy.
Yeah, I talked to a few, and they just said, "Springtime gas for now, right now." So Dave did the legwork, we got the job extended.
So they did approve the extension?
Yep, so we'll just, we have the next June, and we'll work out a bid sheet.
Yeah.
We'll have a contracted bid for the Shastberry Hollow work, maybe even add on one of the jobs from that other list of five and the other grant.
I don't think we're going to have to. I think we can handle all those. I was looking at them today, and we, as long as everything goes smoothly, and now with that, moving forward with the extension, I think we can fit in at least one of this one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then we'll just have the contractors do the big project up in the hollow, and that'll work out fine.
Okay, sounds good.
That'll be good.
Mike, that mower you're talking about, that's a trailhead?
No.
The mower?
Just the smooth, smooth draw roller?
I don't know. It's got a big head on it?
The mower for the brush?
Oh, the mower, I thought you said roller.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it's a 21-foot reach, and it's got a six or seven-foot head on. It's pretty big. I got the paperwork over in the office.
I thought one time it would go on an excavator. Have you ever seen one?
Yes, they're, they're nice. They're really handy. It's slow, and you'd have to have it on a track machine.
Track machine?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, I didn't think it was that big.
No, they're, they're pretty massive. They're, they're very efficient, but they actually work better. It's just, they're slow. It would be beneficial for us to maybe look at that down the road. We'll see how the mower works. If it doesn't work, then we'll, we'll go a different path.
Yeah. Well, the one I saw, it was, I talked to Dave about it, but it was a while ago.
Was it on a wield machine?
I believe it was.
It was?
Yeah. I'll see if I can find, I'll look it up and see if I can find it.
I just know on a, on a track machine, it's more stable because you're, you're reaching out farther than you would be ditching, because you, you know, you're not, you're pretty close when you're doing roadside ditching, but if you're doing brush, you're reaching out more, you know, you want to extend more. So you're a lot more stable with a track machine.
I know. You got spoiled on that.
I know, I did.
Well, one of the things, one of the important things with, Mike and I was discussing changing fleet and rentals is, you know, for the same amount we're paying to have the brushing now, we can rent machines for a long enough period to put our guys in them, return them. We're not responsible for the insurance, the maintenance, the expense of buying them. You know, if breaks, you call the dealer, "Come fix it, it's on the side of the road." It reduces a lot of overhead. We don't have a lot of very expensive equipment sitting along those. The Volvo's several years old and barely has any hours on it. It might be 1,800 hours so far.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of things that we want to look at for increasing productivity and also reducing the overhead around here. And this is the first, one of the experiments is renting this for two weeks. We think we can move fairly quickly with it, and then look at renting it as opposed to hiring a contractor or going full in and buying a very expensive machine. And just rent it for three weeks in the spring, three weeks in the fall, and return it. And like I said, if it breaks, come get it and fix it.
And would this be replacing our contract mower entirely? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Do we have the manpower to, to do that?
Run efficiently with the right plan, yes.
Three weeks is all it takes to?
Not the whole area.
Not the whole area, but if you have a plan worked out, and one of the bigger problems now is getting the big stuff out of the way. And we can always go out and do some mowing on the side, but, you know, this is a lot of stuff we're beginning to investigate, but the economy's here, I mean, we're going to hit $25,000 before long in the roadside mowing program, and we need a lot of work done. $25,000 rents us a lot of equipment and gets us a lot of man time out there. Part of the whole thing, especially Mike's looking into, is increasing the utilization of everybody and making sure we're running as lean and as efficiently as we are, can, as productive as we can. I think we have a long way to discover where we can go and how we can be more efficient, and that's one of the first things we're looking at. And not everyone's going to hit the mark, but I think this is a good step to see how far, this is the first step, let's see how far this thing can go in two weeks. I mean, we might surprise ourselves. And then once you're doing this, it's not, like, these are going to be big cuts, because these roads have some issues. But when you're doing regular maintenance, once you get into a routine, it goes quicker because you're not cutting that much stuff.
Like, if we do do it next year, the first initial expense is probably going to be a lot more than it would down the road, because you've got the initial bad spots and the initial brush, but if you keep maintaining it, it's going to be less and less each time you address it.
Well, the mower that you're talking about though, Mike, is that what they do?
No, it's not.
All they do is the low stuff.
Some of the stuff that he skipped over, he could have done too.
Yeah.
But I talked to him about it, and he's on one guy, so.
Yeah, he stands over to one person now, so.
His main man quit on him halfway through the season, so.
I see the price of that is going up, and it just gets into, like I said, this is step one, just get this thing out there. Let's see how fast we can move with this thing, what can be done with it.
The salesman that I talked to with Fairfield, he, they come, they service, they service the machine, they change the blades, they do anything, because it's coming from our lieutenant, and then it's coming to us. And the machine will be gone right through, and he said if we wanted to, that this, before we run it the second week, they'd come back down, just go over, change the blades if they had to or something, so. But it's all figured into the rental price, the trucking, to get it here, to get it home, and the service, so.
Well, the other thing is too, if you don't, the stuff that you're talking about, cotton, if you get it ice on, it's going to be right to rope.
And that's breaking windshields on trucks, tearing mirrors off. That's not doing us any good either.
Yeah.
A lot of that, I mean, there are some canopy work there. We need to go around with pull saws and chainsaws and contractors and stuff, but we'll get down that road next.
Mike, please, I have another question. We have engaged a contractor to start doing a lot of canopy work as we move into wintertime, and he'll continue doing it through winter, to move a lot of the overhanging- uh, to move a lot of the overhanging low branches that are in a lot of the streets around town. So we've got a number of things going.
Grader lights is gonna do some work on East Row before winter, within the next month or two, he said. Well, yeah, that was two weeks ago, so I'm sure he'll be reaching out to me soon.
Um, I seem to recall that our current contract mower is not gonna be available next year. Is that correct?
We reduce, he's gonna cut back to only work two weeks, is what he told me.
I don't know if he would bid on our project anymore because it requires, I mean, he, for him to do the town by himself is, is a lot.
I think he just finally finished up today.
Yeah.
And he's been four to five days a week, yeah, doing it all by himself. I wanna say he's been over a month trying to do it by himself. But he told me that this is it, pretty much. He's gonna take some towns closer to him and go from there.
So how, how long does it take him to, how much time does he spend in the?
It looks like he did one pass, maybe did two in some bad areas. There's like up on the corner of Buck Hill right here, I noticed he cut that. He did two there. There are some spots he did do two passes, but for the majority, he did one pass. I took him just over a month to do it, but...
And it's essentially mowing is, is what he was doing. He wasn't really cutting back much of the stuff that really needs to get back. I mean, you know, really.
Yeah, well, my only concern is, you know, if we don't contract out the mowing anymore, are we sure we're gonna have the manpower to do the other routine maintenance that we have to do in the summer that we've never really caught up, caught up on? And, you know, summer, we have vacations and everything else that goes with that.
Well, that's, uh, you know, when we get to budget time, we'll have a fairly clear plan. We're discussing a lot of things, including bringing in summer tech, temp help, because we do have this annual, I mean, for the last two summers, it's been awful. We've had retirements, uh, people leaving, injuries. It can't get much worse in the last two summers. But even on a regular summer, we should have a temp to here and not, you know, someone just to do little things, but someone who can fill in for each job. Uh, and we'll try and work out a plan for that, but we're looking to maximize what we have rather than just go out for a contract with somebody else, uh, that's another twenty-five grand out to mow when we might be able to take care of this ourselves if we have the correct plan and direction. And a lot of what, you know, Mike's been talking about, which I agree with completely, is let's get back to maintenance. And maintenance is the brushing, the mowing, ditching. Let's work with what we have. Let's make this the most efficient we can make and as cost effective we can make it. And then we can look at the projects as a different matter and look to contractors to go out and be, you know, a construction project, like rebuilding a section of road if needed. Uh...
And...
We're, we're trying to analyze everything to see which, which direction to go because we, it's the only way to, there's so many things that I think we agree on that need to be changed and brought up to date and, uh, maximized around here that we're not sure what, I mean, I don't, wouldn't say we need more people. I wouldn't say we need more money. Uh, what we need is more organization and more, uh, utilization of a lot of the equipment out here. Is this the right equipment? You know, I would say no, it's a some of it, and I think Mike agrees that some of it might not be the most optimum thing to have. Maybe, like we've talked about a trackless, uh, excavator that can move quicker and ditch quicker. I mean, these are the things, it's, it's efficiency. It's still important to people and a rational method.
Like going to your, about the contract mowers and about the tracked excavator, a lot of these roads need ditches. There's not, there's nowhere for the water to go, so a lot of them are, they're, they're not draining like they should. So we're getting washes in spots that we shouldn't get washed, but we have no choice. But before you go and ditch a road, you should cut the brush. So cutting the brush and taking away the trees that have grown up over the years and stuff is really essential to doing before you ditch. So renting a machine that can take care of the mowing and the brush would be very helpful to us because we can see where the road should be, we can see where the ditch should be, where the water should drain, you know, the right spots are cutouts and stuff, so. There's a lot of variables there.
Yeah. I think in the long run, like, I, I know what you're, what you're speaking about. I think we've talked and I've said, you know, we got things to do winter beforehand. We have late October, November to work on our presentation to the board about all this stuff and where, you know, how we think we can get things to work together. Uh, but we're in the initial, talking about these things and we can always move off in a different direction, but, uh, I think there's just a lot to be changed, a lot to plan, and planning getting to the new building and everything else, so, uh, there's a lot on the table right now.
Yeah.
Well, I like, go ahead.
I don't know if there is anybody else besides Haslam that does that kind of work.
Work it.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, up in, up in, uh, the mountain campus.
Okay.
But he's the only one in, in four years of bidding.
That's cute.
Who's always put in a bid. Him and, him and Haslam.
I, Haslam, he, he also mentioned that if we were to commit, or hey, not we, but a town was to commit now, he would put it on his schedule, but he's not gonna take somebody to call in the spring and say, "I want you to mow. I want you to mow spring and fall for me." Says, he's like, "I'm not doing that." That's what he, that was one thing he mentioned.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was what I was worried about also. Um, but I, I like what you're saying is that maybe we move things like mowing into the maintenance that our crew does and fewer of the projects. Uh, those, some of that goes into contract labor and doing that.
I don't see why we couldn't, you know, like, if we had our road crew doing maintenance like that, there's no reason we couldn't contract out a section of road that needed some ditching or some culverts or something. I mean, even if it doesn't, if it's not a grant, but it does help the road and the town and everything. So there's a lot of ways we could go about it.
And if you get back to business, you begin to have the road perform the way they should be performing.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we have a lot of, a lot of planning yet to do.
Granted, on how much snow we get this winter, I mean, there's a lot of brush, manual labor, brush work, trees, stuff that we can do ourselves. I mean, it makes great winter work.
Okay, good. Well, yeah, let's work it out through budget season and, you know, having schedules for this stuff will help us, uh...
Make decisions.
Make decisions about whether or not it can get done with six people or not.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Good. Anything else for Michael?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, uh, item nine, new member of the planning commission. Two weeks ago, we interviewed Naomi Miller, who volunteered to become a member of the planning commission, much needed. For quite some time, we've been operating with three members on a five-member board for a while, so this will get us up to four. Uh, we invited the public to make comments, inputs as to her fitness for that position. Dave, did we receive any comments from the public?
We received no comments.
We did not receive any comments. In that case, I'll be looking for a motion to nominate Naomi Miller to the planning commission.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion?
Can we, uh, set a term on that? It's usually three-year terms.
Yes. I didn't even think about that. Uh, she's not here, let's lock her in for three years. Okay, so that motion will be, should read to nominate Naomi Miller to a three-year term on the planning commission. Any others? Fall in favor of approving nominating Naomi Miller to the planning commission for a three-year term? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good.
Good.
Planning commission just increased by a third. Which takes us to item ten, which has our, the chair of our planning commission, Chris Williams, to talk about zoning bylaws and Commissioner Mike Chianowski is here too. Welcome, both of you. We know you guys have been hard at work. Any way that you guys can both sit at this table so I don't have to keep rocking my neck around the projector here and then Art can rock his neck around the projector? So I know there are, uh, at least three, three zoning bylaws, right? The Airbnbs, the motel conversions and that pesky table of uses that are, they're up for discussion. So you wanna tell us about, uh, let's start, I guess the motel conversions is the most mature. You want us to tell us what, uh...
Okay, well, you've had this...
What you've done there?
Yep. Since early summer, if I remember right. Uh, you know, both of these bylaws deal with situations that exist presently in the town that are not recognized by the zoning bylaws. And so we feel like it's important that zoning reflect what's really going on out in the townscape. And, you know, this situation with, with motel conversion, housing is really in the situation presently at the Ironcattle Motel, which you're all aware of at some level. And it has the potential to replicate in other locations within town because motels, for reasons that are a little hard to understand, that, that economic business model is kind of past and whatever sustained them, traveling public, patterns have changed. And Hillbrook Motel has been for sale for over three years, shows no signs of reviving. Um, and one other motel in, up in North Shappsbury has disappeared and has converted to housing, um, of much larger scale than the Ironcattle. We're concerned that a lot of people are involved in this situation. And there are nineteen units at the Ironcattle Motel. That's potentially nineteen families now. It's a mixed situation there in terms of housing for employees at William E. Daley and housing for the general public. Um, the school bus stops there, the Vermont, I'm not sure what the right name is, the public bus service that runs something down Route 7A stops there.
Agreed, Mark.
Which thankfully gives these people a way to go shopping in town because it's a kind of isolated location. Uh, so we, we wanna get to grips with this and we do not want to disadvantage William E. Daley, Peckham Industries. We feel like they've done an incredible job on the conversion, but we're concerned about who the next owner will be, and there will be a next owner. You know, tomorrow, John Peckham could tire the whole thing and say, "It's for sale." Um, Hillbrook Motel, as I mentioned earlier, for sale. You know, so we've seen this problem in Bennington. We've seen it all over the state of Vermont, which is that the business model for motels is shrinking and people are converted to housing. But this is kind of marginal housing in that people don't have kitchens. And, um, so we feel best to address the problem by saying that what we've seen at the William E. Daley establishment is, is a pretty good model going forward. They've done an incredible job. They've taken and converted one unit into communal recreation, social space and kitchen. And so everybody has facilities to cook on premises. We feel it's important that large operations have an onsite manager because there's just a lot of people involved in this situation. And, uh, it, it has the potential to get out of hand and somebody being there, living there, being close to the operation would be desirable. We put the threshold at ten units or more. Um, but the idea that, you know, what we're concerned about at the planning commission is that their economic difficulties in town, that have no mention in any of the bylaws, that this stuff is going on with no recognition, and I don't mean regulation. I'm saying that it's an activity that should be recognized in, in the public sphere and have some accountability. Otherwise, it becomes a kind of outlaw operation. And so the second of these...
Let's, uh, stay with that one for a minute. Uh, the motel conversion to housing. So the, the things that the planning commission is recommending in terms of bylaw changes, mainly that if it's, um, greater than ten units, that there's an onsite manager on the property, that, uh, the conversion triggers a, a change of use in our zoning bylaws and allows the, the zoning administrator or the health officer to inspect the property annually? Does it say?
Annually, yeah. We think this is very important.
Absolutely. And, um, it also mentions what I, which I think is probably required by state law anyway, that abide by building codes when the, when the changes occur, or does that force something new on them?
No, change of use on a backhoe triggers building codes and energy codes.
Okay, so the main thing that we're doing is triggering a change of use then when we go from motel to permanent resident housing?
That's correct. And as far as the existing operation at the Ironcattle Motel, uh, William E. Daley slash Peckham should feel no effect of this, except that they will have to stand for an annual inspection. Seems reasonable to us.
I have a problem with, I don't feel we have a certified health inspector that is qualified to do that. And if, and I think she would be responsible if something did happen and they said, "Well, you inspected us just a week ago and there was an outbreak of something." Uh, I, I have a problem with that. I, I don't think that the, our health inspector is qualified to make that kind of, of an inspection. Our health inspector's just somebody that stepped up for the job. They aren't a doctor or have, have no training in, in this thing.
Uh, but we're, this is a function that in many cases, we're required to do as a town.
Well, I, I don't, I have problems with this.
This is extending, an extension of what is, the health inspector does in rental housing. When, when triggered by a, a complaint from a renter, the house, the, the health inspector goes and checks and she has a checklist. It's, uh, for basic, uh, safety features in the house. That's something she does now. If she's, if we don't have a health inspector, it falls to the, the chair of the select board, who's even less qualified to do that job as they did for a, a few months. So, uh, this is really just, uh, turning rental, uh, turning a motel into rental housing. The only thing that's a little bit different is that we can, uh, trigger an expense, expense, inspection on our own with, uh, annually. Am I correct about that?
Yes, we can, you know, at our discretion, this is what we're proposing. And to, to further answer your question, Art, I spoke with the Commissioner of Public Safety about this, uh, whose name I have to go back to my notes to find, but, um, I said, "Well, what are the chances that we can get your department to do an annual inspection?" And they had done an inspection when the change of use occurred at Ironcattle, and so I felt much better about hope than knowing that they had looked at it and said, "Okay, everything looks good and in order." Uh, and he said, "No, we, we don't begin to have the manpower to do it on an annual basis." And he pointed me toward the town health officer and said that this is the person that they rely on in the local government level to do this sort of work.
No, that's, I'm just telling my opinion.
Yes, no, I, I'm telling you where we're coming from.
Yep.
So, so Chris, this permanent housing with those units, is that like buying a condo or are they rented?
Well, the bylaw doesn't specify one way or another. Um, it's just... It's assumed, the assumption I needed is rental. That's the model that we see throughout the state.
Permanent housing usually is a rental, that's a house you buy.
That might just not, not the train, not the traveling public, just trying to differentiate between people who are coming through the weekend and people who are-
Stay there, yep.
It got a little dicey if you tried to-
It's the difference between that and Shire's.
Specify specific amounts of time, sometimes a contractor might come to town and rent a room for a month. It's a project, so that was one area we tried to avoid saying, "Hey, one month or six weeks triggers an immediate subject inspection." Trying to put an action-
Send someone in. Number timeline of what's permanent, what's-
That tricky is.
Art, do you want to express your concerns out loud?
Yeah. What's the difference between somebody renting a place at Daley's and somebody renting a place in a brick house across McRae's store?
I didn't understand the last part, Art.
What's the difference between somebody renting a room or a-
A unit.
Area, a unit at Daley's and somebody paying rent at Shire's Housing across McRae's store, one of the newer places.
Okay, all right, good, got you. Good question. The definition of dwelling unit in the zoning bylaws says all facilities, which includes kitchens. Up here, you're not going to get a kitchen as part of your dwelling unit. Therefore, it is not a dwelling unit. Therefore, it falls in some kind of gray area that's not recognized in the zoning bylaws. So the legality of the operation there is questionable. And change of use has occurred, but it's not a change to anything that's recognized in the zoning bylaws. Therefore, we recommend this zoning change to deal with that situation, and it may occur in other locations because we see evidence of this all around the state of Vermont.
There's a, there's a real safety issue here too, though. When you have people permanently living in a room that doesn't have a kitchen, you're, you're worried that they're going to be, you know, trying to cook on the-
Get them on a hot plate.
A hot plate.
A hot plate or a sterno can or something like that. Those are the kind of things that you're, we're worried about here.
So are the affordable housing units subject to yearly inspection?
Are you talking about Shire's Housing?
Yeah.
Well, I have some information about that being on the board of Shire's Housing myself. And the answer is no, but it could vary town by town. You know, we're, we're subject to inspection, but it's the fire safety at initial occupancy, but they're spread pretty thin. They don't have a lot of manpower. We're pretty far from Waterbury, where they're headquartered, so that, no, they don't pretend that they're going to inspect on a yearly basis.
The other reason that we're, as you, I think I heard you whispering, picking on these people is that there's a history in the county and the state as a whole of motels being converted to permanent housing, which turn into a real blight for the community. And this is our attempt to try to get some control and make sure that basic standards of living are maintained in these places.
You have the division of fire safety or the health inspector. So would the health inspector be responsible for looking at fire codes or if the fires, fire police go and fire-
Well, I asked all of these questions, Art. Turns out that the health inspector doesn't actually have training in building codes.
Yes.
And NFPA 101, which is the governing life safety code, is not within their purview. But they have a pretty extensive checklist, which I've looked over. And, you know, it's a resource that we can break the bear on the issue. And we might consider this more carefully in employment of health inspector in the future.
Well, again, this is all for public comment. I'm just raising my-
Now, are these annual, these annual inspections, are they, are they telegraphed? I mean, are they random or are they put out there so everybody has a chance to prepare for them?
It's not, within our purview to say.
Well, we could, but we haven't specified in the bylaw whether or not they're random or not correct.
Right. And annual inspection will be, but we don't need to make a big deal out of this. It's just the history that we see is, we look around the state, that this is a widespread pattern, that it's been really problematic. I spoke with Dan Monks in Bennington about their experience with Motel South on Route 7A, and he had a long story of woe and not much success. And I've since heard stories about places that are even worse. So, you know, this is our attempt to be proactive in Shastbury and recognize that this is something we can deal with if we get out in front of it.
One thought is if we have something on the books, somebody, because this is a business model, somebody looking to deploy that business model here in Shastbury might say, "Well, you know, it looks like Shastbury's thought about this. Maybe Woodford's better." It's just one way to say.
Does Bennington have this? Does Bennington have this inspection? No, no. I think Bennington has been singularly unsuccessful in dealing with this problem. And, you know, I heard a lot of kind of angst from the zoning administrator about how unsuccessful they had been. And, you know, I, I say that without pointing blame at anybody.
All they need is just somebody from the select board to go up and visit some other place. That's all they need.
Probably see someone, don't you?
All the time, it's all the time. And it just egregious. I mean, the maintenance is zero. They just suck inception money. And they do nothing for the residents at all. So I think this is a step in the right direction.
And there was a sense on the planning mission that the Iron Kettle has been more successful than almost any other that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
In terms of putting in some basic-
Yeah, that's good.
Life safety measures, having an onsite management. It was an attempt to say, "If we're going to do this, you have to do it at least as well as the Iron Kettle did it."
Yeah, yeah.
We really tried not to. We did not want to make life harder for Peckham. They'll need it.
Well, we met with, you know, William E. Daley's manager, Brian Leff, several times in the course of this, to hear their concerns and to craft a thing in a way that wouldn't disadvantage them.
Well, what does the state say about converting them over to private rentals like that as far as anything to do with the septic systems? Because the septic systems in a rental unit where somebody's living 365 days a year is going to be, put a lot more stress on that septic system than one that's rented. No motel's full every day all year long.
Right, well, we did talk to Brian Leff about that relative to the Iron Kettle Motel. They had done some, some work. They have two different septic fields there. This is beyond our purview and it's also beyond our expertise. So, you know, we'll leave that to Department of A and R.
Well, I was wondering, there was no direction from the state was what I was getting at.
Well, we didn't get much direction from the state in the course of the whole operation of looking at this question. But, you know, we, we talked to people in other towns in terms of what their experience had been, and it was a general agreement that this is a pattern that replicates all across the state. And that it's been really problematic in some communities.
Well, it's the lack of housing, period. Affordable housing.
We haven't built any rental housing in a couple of generations in Vermont. There just hasn't been much profit in. And so now we're kind of going for these sort of bottom of the barrel solutions. And, you know, the results haven't been great.
No.
Haven't been, you know, positive for a lot of the towns involved.
All right. That is one. The other one is Airbnb's. Short-term rental.
We're, we're trying to avoid that nomad glacier because that's a specific corporation. But-
But it lets people know what we're talking about.
Yes, it does.
Like Airbnb's, maybe I should say. Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. We've crafted our definition right from the state statute that was recently passed. The state seems mainly concerned to collect rooms and meals taxes. We see that there's a zoning issue again, situation that's happening out on the landscape that isn't talked about in our zoning bylaws. And last time I looked at the Airbnb website for Shastbury, I see 54 rentals. So it's not as if this thing is a sleeper that only a few people know of. There's an industry that's already formed out there. I've talked to a couple of operators who run rental units on Airbnb and got a little sense of how that all works. But there seems to be a considerable market that's already in existence before coming in and asking to take out permits, to build more units, small cottages for tourist rental. We think this is an opportunity, actually. Vermonters have done this kind of thing in spurts and starts, you know, and then the automobile in the 20s and 30s produced. Situations like up in the center of Shastbury, the motor court with the little cabins, serenity lodging, that's directly from that time period. And so this has come and gone in waves ever since railroads arrived in Vermont and people from down country started coming here for a little R and R. We think it's good. We think that ordinary people can profit from this. We think people could pay their taxes based on rental units to tourists. We think the market is there. It's fairly clearly demonstrated already. But we're concerned that, you know, no regulations at all has the potential for annoying neighbors and creating friction within the town. And we don't think it needs to be regulated so much as we just need kind of the directed development. And this is the attempt to cast it as a grassroots economic issue. Home occupation, what could be more down home than having a home occupation, a couple of tourist cabins out back that you rent to people? You pull in enough money to pay the taxes, everybody benefits, hopefully you run a good operation. If not, you'll get one star on the reviews online and your business will dry up. We don't think it's completely self-regulating. We don't think this is absolutely the be-all and end-all in that there are no minimum standards. And let's talk about that question for a minute because the state lodging statutes, there's a code, which I have read, three or more units invokes that statute. But, you know, if you only had two little cabins out back, nothing in this says that you have to have septic, running water, electricity. There's no minimum standards here. The state would require that, and the state's requirements are extensive in the lodging bylaw, not bylaw, but statute. And so, you know, part of it is, we've debated this back and forth quite extensively in the planning commission. We think the market is the reason why these things, if you look at what's available on Airbnb, it's pretty high-end stuff by and large, a little bit over-furnished of anything. And so we think the market will kind of dictate minimum standards. And we specifically exempt things that kind of have a camping flavor of yurts, lean-to's, tents, tents on platforms, something like that, TPs. This would be a separate category, and we understand that that's going on out there as well and it's being promoted, but this bylaw is an attempt to regulate that.
And why? Do you still want to go there?
The, the section in the bylaw that deals with campgrounds is very badly conceived. If you look in the definitions, campground is defined use, but it's not actually permitted in any zoning district. So that might be our next, we don't know how important this is, but we thought, let's just put that off to the side for the moment and deal with what we know is really going on. Now, there is, there is rental of tents and so on.
I know. Don't we have a yurt in Shastbury? I thought we did.
Do we? I have no idea.
I don't think it's a rental. I think it's an assembly space, but I think-
Right, it's a kit you buy.
Yeah, but I, but I think there's got to be at least one in Shastbury.
And it's being rented?
No, I think it's part of, might be part of a younger thing going on.
Is it where in the Shastbury colony?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. You know, but I know there's something up there. I'm just thinking, Shastbury's ideal for high-end camping platform, tents and yurts and-
I agree.
I think it'd be a destination, absolutely. So, anyway.
So, kind of in summary, what we're looking at here is saying that short-term rental like Airbnb would be classified in our bylaws as a home occupation, which would trigger a DRB review. And that's our way?
Site plan review. It's not conditional.
Site plan review.
Site plan review.
Okay, so it's, it's allowed in these zones, but the DRB would have control over the layout of how it's-
That's correct. Well, the DRB would review the thing for setbacks and drainage and road access and parking.
And size, like any home occupation, correct? It would have limits to how much of the-
Yeah, depending on what zone you're in, it can be 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet.
Right. So the idea is that we're, we want to allow this and let people, you know, earn the money that they do on Airbnb. But these are essentially hotel situations, if, especially if they get to be too large and too permanent. So we have some measure of, of control to make sure that it doesn't become something that the neighbors don't like.
Well, it has ample setbacks, 200-foot setbacks. You've got to have quite a bit of lot to do somewhere. 200 foot from the boundaries, 200 foot from one unit from another, so they're not all jammed together, with exemption for existing buildings that are converted, which you can't control the location.
That's also a way to control, it's not controlled by which zone you're in, by how much land you can have essentially. So nobody's left out, but if you only have a one-acre lot, you just can't quite wait for setbacks. And that's what's limiting you, not which zone you're in, except for the forced curbs. There's really no chance.
Any other thoughts? Do we think 200 feet is the right number? Is that? My first thought is that's, that's a pretty big number. Somebody might have a-
It's not to protect neighbors.
Right.
So, you know, people coming on Friday night, moving in, playing hip-hop music, hanging out, drinking some wine, you know, it has the potential for annoyance. Given that this is allowable in- Given that this is allowable in every zone except forest recreation, that people who are used to the quiet of the countryside could take offense to, you know, having a Honda Civic parked out front and people are hanging out till all hours of night. They're on the Boston or New York schedule and it's the weekend and they're going to party it out.
You said this is allowed in every, every zone? Because home occupations are allowed in every zone? I'm just wondering if there needs to be some tailoring.
I understand you say that if you have a one-acre lot, two-hundred feet just isn't, is such a big number that it wouldn't be allowed in a one-acre lot? Is that right? Is that what I heard you say?
I was just using that as an illustration. That wasn't meant to be. I just mean you've got to satisfy the two-hundred feet from the perimeter and two-hundred feet from each other. So there's something limiting buildings on that property, correct? Unless they're existing.
An acre is two-hundred-and-ten feet squared. So you have time for... Right, you could put a twenty...
But also this is an addition to the accessory dwellings. So somebody could, this is all in addition to your accessory dwellings. So if you have a space above your garage already or a mother-in-law apartment, you could already be doing that. You wouldn't have to worry about any of this in the first place.
This is only for new structures, you're saying?
No, it's just something in addition to your primary dwelling, your accessory dwelling. You already have that in the existing bylaws. This would only start to kick in if you're going for that third and fourth unit. Once you hit that, over that third unit, now you're, you're triggering state statutes.
I see, I see. So you can rent out your...
You were saying there's a limit there. I was one in my category that that's like commercial or...
Be a home occupation and we're calling it that, is that what you mean?
Right, but you said something after...
Oh, yeah, once you get beyond, what is it, three units, then you're essentially a motel or you have to, it doesn't, you could be a Airbnb or a motel, but you're triggering a death penalty state statutes. In our case in Shasbury, if you suddenly, say, for instance, the Serenity Motel would have little motor lodges, I don't know how many there are there, but if you built two of those on your property, you'd be fine. But you hit that third one, suddenly you're a motel. In Shasbury, you can only do that on the roadside commercials. So you're already exceeded what we allow in rural zones. That's something, that's a different issue. If Shasbury decided it wanted to allow campgrounds or motels in more zones, that's a different can of worms.
So you were saying about accessory dwellings. So the mother-in-law unit that you already have on your property, you can rent that out exempt from the statute?
That's correct. That's been in effect for about ten years. The state said that Vermont hasn't built enough housing over the last couple of decades and that as of right, no review required that anybody could build an accessory dwelling unit as part of their main residence or an outbuilding, a new construction or renovation on their property. And this was a way to expand housing in Vermont across the state without a major tipping over or a huge amount of funding. That this was something they could have kind of percolated out from the grassroots level.
Any more discussion on this one? Okay, and then the third one, it's really just a housekeeping detail, I hope, when all is said and done, but in our zoning bylaws, we included this handy table of uses and it caused some confusion because it had a legend here. What it does is it lists every possible land use that's anywhere in our bylaws and all the different zones in our bylaws, and it shows where they intersect. So if you were looking to find out where you can do family childcare center, you would know that you can do that in village residential and village commercial, village center. But when we had written this, originally we had an X that we filled in all these other squares with and the X said not permitted. Our intention in saying that was that it was not explicitly permitted, not that it was explicitly not permitted. And that caused some confusion with the DRB and people trying to apply that not permitted to home occupation. So what we have come up with, just as kind of a style change really, is we've taken out X equals not permitted and just put dashes in the table where things are not explicitly stated in the bylaws as being permitted in that zone and thereby stopping any one from interpreting, we hope, anything by the dash that's left there. I have sent this to the DRB. I'm still waiting to hear back on their, if this solves the problem that they thought they had with that. I think they were wanting us to take the table of uses out at one time. I think the table of uses is safe and helpful and should stay there and that we can make this minor style change and keep anyone from interpreting anything beyond the language of the bylaws in it.
So the dash means?
It means that nothing is said about that in the bylaws.
Okay.
No, don't put a question. Yeah. Again, the idea here was just to save having to read through the entire bylaws to see where such a thing is permitted. Again, when we rewrote the bylaws two years ago, the one big goal was to make it more user-friendly and this was part of that. All right. So I don't believe we have actual language from you yet on the short-term rentals.
Okay, well, it has to be six different sections because home occupations are defined by individual zoning districts. I wrote up a draft with that a while back. You know, it's very wordy is the only thing I would say. And so we thought we'd talk to you about general principles and get your reaction before we went and put it into the dry language of the zoning resolution. But we can do that. We also need to write a report and schedule public hearings on this, which we'll do shortly. I wanted to have this session with the select board to see what concerns were before I went ahead and did those things. But let me do that and we'll hold public hearings in Morton and pass it on to you and you'll have to do the same thing.
Yes, and our zoning administrator, Shelley Stiles, has generated a timeline. Again, this is, we're aiming for the March ballot. And again, March is not far away when you're talking about zoning bylaws changes. And the first deadline that the planning commission has for this is October 23rd, which is barely more than a month away, so...
To get a public hearing done.
To warn the hearing.
No, we need to do that. Not write the necessary reports.
I just wanted to ask you, like, the short-term rental, what is that timeline anyway? What makes it short-term?
It's defined in the definitions. It says that properties that rent for thirty days or less...
Thirty days or less.
And are rented for at least fourteen days a year. This is language straight out of state statutes, so then we're in complete alignment with how the state uses.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for our commissioners? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Update on the town garage and the transfer station project, David?
Well, it looks like the transfer station's two to three weeks out yet as the driveway has to be constructed, the gate has to go up, the ponds have to be fixed and it just keeps kind of going back on the schedule a little bit. This is more a problem for them than it is for us. But as soon as we are ready to go, we'll get out of their way as soon as it's finished. Hopefully the gates will be up by the end of next week because we have to operate within our permit from the state. So certain things have to be done. And essentially the transfer station has to be turned to us. They have to be completely done. And then working with TAM and our crew, we're installing railings. It was designed to comply with code, but when you look at it, it's like we should really have a barrier on the top of this just for extra safety. So we're going to put that in afterwards, turned over to us. We have a little work to do when it's finished, but it's coming along. The building itself has arrived. It's scheduled to begin next Monday. It'll take about ten days to erect the entire building. So the site will look just a hundred percent differently in a couple of weeks. We're definitely falling behind on the site work for a variety of reasons, but that's a scheduling issue for our contractor more than it is for us and to try and make sure that no one's in Morton's way when they come because Morton is erecting the building themselves. They've been hired by Russell, so they're the ones putting up the building and I'm sure they're very particular about the way they do it. So there will be work going on this weekend and there will be work on Sunday, I understand. But that'll be under the supervision of our engineers. Everything will be done according to the contract. So budget-wise, we're in good shape. I'm not going to say there's much fudge room in this budget, but, you know, it's coming along where we anticipated. We're about three-hundred-and-seventy thousand into it right now and we have enough to get through to the end. The only thing that might come up is that, if you remember, we withheld the top, what is it, six inches of gravel in parks lots? Yeah, we withheld that and that might turn out to have been a good idea. It will run tight to the wire, but I think we kind of planned that. But otherwise, everything's moving along. It's just a question of getting the site worked on a little bit. Like I said, once the building's up, they're going to be inside putting it all together, which of course will take some time. It's still tentative for December 24th, but, you know, realistically in a project this size, staying exactly on the schedule is going to be a little bit difficult. The big thing I would say at this point is site work before Frost steps in. So they're working on that and they're confident they'll get there, so it's moving along.
Okay.
In pretty good shape.
Good. All right, that's all we have.
Can I say something?
Yes.
My name's Scott Owens, I live in Armera, this is my wife Karen. We have a problem with the neighborhood hours that has dogs that bark constantly and it registered as livestock. So Dave knows about it because they've been going back and forth. And nobody can do anything about it because of the statute. Am I saying it correctly?
Correct.
State troopers can't do anything, the constable can't do anything. It's because of the law that's here. Am I right? Am I saying that?
State law, yes.
Well, the Ag Department told me that they have nothing to do with this. Okay. So I have the letter from the ground, from the Ag Department that said that they have nothing to do with issuing of the license.
Oh, issuing of the license?
Yes.
Okay, that raises the question of our reason for denial of the license, which I believe I spoke to...
Spoke to me and our troopers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have a petition of the neighbors that have been complaining. I just happen to be the one that has been lying about.
I think I mentioned that on reapplication for the licenses for next year, that's something we can talk and we're going to have to get legal advice on that. There's...
Right.
From BLCT's attorneys, they were pretty much, this is a difficult thing to do. Granted, you know, we can go into type of dog, do they appropriate there and everything else? And I know the complaints because I've spoken to all of you. But that is something we can take up. But I think if not, if you bring the petition, I'd like to start looking again into the legal aspects of it because it would have to come down to denying the license for farm dogs that...
How can it be registered as livestock?
No, that they're farm dogs. They're specifically exempt under certain parts of the statute from the, what is it called, the noise in the night and those kinds of annoyances.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the way the statute is also worded is cars and noises at night. I get two different answers. One is from sunset till dusk, that would be the noise. Then I was told from ten o'clock at night till eight o'clock in the morning. So where does this timeline come about? As soon as the sun sets, goes down, was it ten o'clock at night? So that's a whole other ordinance, you know? Because I could be outside mowing my grass at seven-thirty at night and the sun's down and that could be a noise in the night complaint.
Also, town ordinance can change from town to town. Maybe nine o'clock in one town, ten in another.
This is a gesture from the state police and from Benetton Sheriff's. So nobody even knows what's struck you.
Well, the other, the real issue with the dogs is, again, the dog is allowed to make as much noise as it wants at any time when it's in active operation or it's actively protecting livestock. Because she's decided to start night grazing, the dog can bark literally all night.
Well, it's Saturday.
Yeah, I know, I've heard.
From seven o'clock at night. So I don't know what time in the morning. As soon as the sun sets, the dog...
I'm talking, I mean, you know, you look out and the dog's barking, but, you know, at night you can't tell, you know, all's that, well, there must have been a fox over there. There must have been something.
But there was no animals in that field.
She's had them out.
There was no animals in that field. Where the dogs could be out there barking all night.
No. So what are you going to have?
We've tried working with her, I've tried going over there and seeing the dogs, but she gets in between me with the dog. How are the dogs going to get to them? If I walk out of my house with my dog and then in that pen, they start barking.
Dogs have chased deer already. You stand out on the roadside, they'll come if you're running down the road, the dogs will come running at you defensively.
I've stopped to look at them and they howl at me too. I'm just parked in my car. The dogs run freely on the road?
Yeah.
No, they don't run in front, she put effects. Okay, her barn to the roadside, Scott would be like five-hundred feet maybe, six-hundred feet. They'll come charging from the barn. If you're walking down the road, you don't have to have another animal. They will charge you because they think you're a predator.
These dogs are very specifically trained dogs for large areas. They actually have an interesting history there. There's many comments on whether or not they...
Sounds like Dover.
Are they great parrots?
What's that? No, I forget the name off the top of my head. I had to look them up, so...
It gives you a background on these dogs. They were designed to be in the Italian Alps. And specific trainers in New York that I've talked to breeders, they say that these dogs need a lot of training because they're not designed to be around people. They're designed to protect livestock. I also read an article, these dogs will lure in coyotes. She got these dogs to get rid of the coyotes to keep them away from them. Meanwhile, they're luring them in. I'm getting more and more coyotes that are coming in. I'm closing them closer to the property. I don't know what they're doing to bring them in, but they're doing this.
So what's the law on thinning out toy dogs? Is there a law on thinning out the toy dogs? You can give her those.
So the law that's... You said that it's Shasbury law that's making this happen?
Am I saying my thing though?
No, what we're doing, they applied for a farm dog license, which normally isn't something...
Applied to who?
Downstairs, you get a license. You can get a dog license, you can get a farm dog license.
She got registered both, correct?
Yeah, I can believe so. I believe they are both. So they were licensed as farm dogs and then...
By the town of Shasbury?
Yeah. But there's laws that govern what can be done downstairs. Now, with this, I mean, I'd like to bring this back to the attorneys we use upstate and go, well, what are we supposed to do here? This is not, as I read in one of these descriptions, like Good Dogs for Montana or something. I mean, this is almost, I mean, this is not the wide open prairie. This is, there's a lot of houses in close proximity here.
The wrong tool for the job.
Well, very well, it could be.
She's got packers that she started raising because they protected her. She has cowies.
I was going to say if it's labos would protect.
And now she's got these dogs. But the animals were never eaten by her.
She's never had any, in the past, over four years that I've been there, no sheep or any of her livestock, other than her birds. It's gotten taken. Her birds have gotten taken by a fox. Other than no sheep or anything else.
And you've spoken to her and tried to explain the situation?
Yeah, she just brings out this war that she has the right to have the dogs out there and bark. She doesn't listen. Tell me, are animals facing that with us?
She's got hounds to feed, so I'm going to do something to her.
Is that what those cameras are for?
Yes.
The guy's asking me what the cameras are.
Tell us to go take them off.
And then across the road, there's a sign that says camera, and it points to it, and it's out in front.
Well, the reason why that sign is there, if you notice all those things?
Yeah.
That's to make the sin of just keep going on. Owner of the dog, her husband, has had arguments and arguments with this lady about these dogs. So it's becoming a very big issue.
The husband is arguing with her about the dogs?
Yes. I can't even come out the back door of my house without the dogs causing a ruckus.
That dog graduated this year. The whole time, we had people over in the backyard, that dog is my family. The whole time, the dogs and everyone's like, you have to listen to that all the time.
I mean.
And this is several neighbors.
So it sounds like.
Been with us for a while.
It sounds like the town of Shasberry approved a license, a dog license, calling these farm dogs, and that triggered the state law that says they can bark all night long if they want to.
Yeah, because the dog, and the dog is exempt from all regulations if it's in the performance of its duties, which is protecting the livestock. So you'd almost have to have it to read to prove that there's nothing out there it's barking at. I mean.
It is very difficult.
Yeah, it is, and that's why I was thinking, I know this is kind of a long time, but as we come to relicensing these things, then we are prepared to argue that they're not acceptable. And I don't even know how to do that, because the way the law is, it's very difficult.
If it's a farm.
Yeah, it's a farm. It is a farm, it's a registered farm. I mean, it's been in magazines for farming and things.
Yeah, the dogs have even been in magazines.
Now, dogs have been in magazines and.
It's going to be a difficult task.
It is a difficult task, but I think the next start is when the license comes up. But again, I have to go back to our attorneys and say if this is worth, I mean, are we going to get anywhere?
Is there a solution to this that you can conceive of short of her not having those dogs?
I have no problem with the, I just know my property, eat my grass, I can care less. I don't have to mow the grass when I shoot these dogs. I can care less about the bells on the sheep.
Get them there.
But dogs bark constantly.
Don't have a flat on the left side.
Got some audio?
When you come up the hill.
The horse are tiring by garrages.
Garrages, thank you.
The dogs aggressed him to you?
Why, before she had this big fence that she put on us.
I'm at the corner of my house.
And the last weekend, I had one hour.
The house is way down.
They came charging at me in my yard. I mean, not yet, but then they altered. And then I just, I said, just go home. But I wasn't paying attention.
Is that Hank and Connie Van Dyne's old house? Maybe that goes back before you.
Yeah, this is, it's got to be important, Dr. Smalls.
That's the older bird.
Me. So how far away is the dog?
6 o'clock in the morning.
From your house?
Uh, probably about 200 feet, roughly. It's like 200 yards.
High sheep?
Yep.
The one side. Tearing them out.
Yes.
Raise range.
So, I mean, all the neighbors have sent taxes to her, called her. And anytime you try to bring an option, goes the Vermont Farm Act, what's in front of you. Right, the farm. I'm not stopping you from farming. I'm 100% for farm. I wouldn't survive without the farm. I have family. So what she's trying to do is justify why she has these dogs.
You mean the equality of life. The current act's been stripped away.
Yes. And Dave will tell you, I haven't lost my temper with you guys or anybody.
No, no, no.
I've been very patient and humble because they know it's not his fault. It's not the dog's fault, it's the owner's.
Are those dogs aggressive to you or your, your pets or anything?
Oh, they're aggressive to anybody. Go walk down the road tomorrow with your dogs.
If they were to come out for their property, out of your property?
No, they did at one point. But she has a fence up now, and she had livestock heat down the end, which those dogs can get through the livestock heat.
Yeah.
If they really want to. But the fence is five foot tall now. But they get out, and they want something they can get.
That picture, it looks like that dog weighs 100 pounds.
You read up on the dog, if you hear about their jaws, they're designed to kill wolves.
Yeah.
So you know what a wolf is and what kind of predator they are.
Yeah.
And like I told her, it's like having a llama in your house going off 24/7, you as your neighbor, somebody to be robbing your house, you're going to care less about. The sheep are doing the same thing. They could get, the dog will bark, and I'll feed the goats, I'll feed the sheep, I'll feed horses, all actors from my tree, they could care less about the dog's bark. So the dogs are barking because I'm there, but they won't do nothing about it.
Do they bother like the kids walking down the road?
Anybody, anybody.
I don't, cars, if the car is going by real slow, they'll stop barking at the car.
It's, it's.
Have you worked on that road?
A little bit.
Mike, have you worked on that road?
So what options do we have? Well, I thought. Let's keep the conversation here at the table.
I thought the best option would be to take it up at licensing time again, to oppose the license for farm dogs however we can legally. Because this is issued to try and retract it, because that's what we first went to BLCT for, our attorneys was, what do we do here? I mean, they're clearly, they're clearly a nuisance, to put it politely. And we're kind of stymied at the moment. Retracting the license is difficult, but maybe not issuing it, given the background of the problems they're causing the neighborhood, might be the easier thing. And it might be the course of action and just do it, just don't issue the license. And.
Don't issue a farm dog license.
Don't issue a farm dog license.
Therefore, they can't stand behind the fact that it.
That's right. Then they become a nuisance in the night.
Well, they said they might be able to take care of that. It's.
It's, and then you get to, because I talked with Paul McGann about that, and we went over the farm dog statute and to taking them for being a nuisance in the night when they're licensed farm dogs protecting the plot, and there's no proximity clause in that.
Right.
You know, if they think there's a fox at this end of the field, and there's a sheep over here, and they start barking, they're guard dogs. You know, you get into this fuzzy area, which it sounds like it's easy to sign a complaint for that, but it's not, because you have to go in and prove that this dog wasn't protecting the sheep.
What about a low-tech solution, like a bark tower?
Oh, we've discussed it. Her statement is that this is what these dogs are supposed to do. And her wording, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, when the dogs bark, she can sleep at night because she knows her animals are being protected. I suspect.
Yeah, yeah.
So the rest of the neighbors? So who can't say? I have two jobs. I came for my second job right now to come here. I get up at 4:30 in the morning, I go to work every day. And you're going to tell me this? And when she said that, I'm like, there's no talking.
Well, he left the house, and then, you know, she said, do you think he'd wait? He must go to sleep. I said, well, how is he going to get up when there's a llama going?
Yeah, I pay taxes. I moved off to Long Island to give my kids a better school, which they've done accident here, okay? I don't want to hear that kind of noise, you know?
I don't want to hear it.
She doesn't want me to shoot my guns, you know? She's against guns. I've never had, okay, no problem. I've never shot with guns since I've lived there. My son should talk to me. I love him, that's it. You know, I used to go over and bail hay with her. Remember, she got stuck with the tractor. But these dogs, she's being just like that. There's no fault.
Well, Dave, let's talk to the attorney and see if we have any options.
Yeah, we'll continue to pursue it.
I think we're going to start because I don't know where the attorney says.
We have to all craft some pathway here.
I know it's coming down, it's going to be out of my pocket to deal with this.
Does anybody know the woman?
Yeah, we have, we know her.
Is there some, somebody that knows her that can maybe talk to her and?
I think the tone is that people in the neighborhood basically had a relationship prior to the dogs that has deteriorated since their introduction to the neighborhood. So she's not responsive to the neighbors.
Okay.
Like her husband says, she's not being very legal there. So they think about herself.
So, I mean, the husband, your partner can't talk to you, how else does anybody else come with that?
It almost sounds like she's getting some kind of satisfaction out of this.
Yeah, I don't know. We can't answer that.
Let me take it up again with legal, let's work on a course of action. I'm glad you have a petition out, because maybe that always helps that, you know?
Yeah.
People are fed up.
Yeah, I mean, Saturday was the breaking point with everybody. You know, I just happen to be the bad guy because I'm the one.
Yeah.
Because we live the closest to it.
Yeah.
You know, I send texts nice and politely, but, you know, I know, we've been going back a couple of months since May.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's down to somebody that they.
It sounds like a bad situation. And I'm sorry, we don't seem to have a good handle on what we can do about it, but we'll look into it and try to come up with something.
Yeah, I'm not sure of a solution today, because I know it's not going to happen because she's not.
Well, thanks for being so understanding.
Well, there's nothing I can do about it. I'm going to pay taxes and go to work.
Some people don't look at it that way.
Well, if my other is, it would have been a big problem.
Yeah.
I got too much stuff to deal with, my life's too short.
Okay, good.
I gotta give them my electric bill because I have to turn on my electric stuff.
And Dave, you got their names?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got my phone number.
Tell me your names again?
Scott Owens.
Scott Owens.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, well, thanks for coming in, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you for doing what you guys do. And by the way, thank you for repairing the road. Dave, thank you very much, because I know there's a lot of complaints about my road. I tried a little Honda down the road, but you say it now. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you for your time for listening to me back. Have a good night.
Good, thank you. All right, next we are due to go into executive session for contract negotiations with TAM,